There you go. Okay. So, welcome, everybody. We always start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Actually, thank you, Captain Chen, because everybody look at Captain Chen, and he has the flag. Okay? So, let's see, Victoria, you're on the line here. Victoria, lead us in the pledge. Victoria Curdo, you can unmute him that morning. Yeah, we're waiting for Victoria, but I guess she can't. Yeah, she got it. Victoria, was it good? No, Victoria can't unmute. Okay. So, let's see who is unmuted. All right, let's go. All right, it's unmuted.
Okay.
Bart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so we have a couple of public hearings before we start the meeting. Is anybody, we're going to be talking about a couple of U-LRPs. Proposed elevate transit zoning for accessibility of the citywide text amendment, and a proposed citywide hotel text amendment, and the Health and Fitness Citywide Text Amendment. So, is there anybody here from the public that wants to speak? Because the board will do their speaking at the board. Anybody, Marnie?
Hi. Can you hear me? Hello?
Marnie, you're on mute again.
I'm having that type of day, sorry, guys. Richard, are you speaking of the public portion or on the land use matters?
Um, I'd like to speak during the, the public session.
Okay.
We're not there yet. We'll acknowledge you during that session.
Okay, great, thank you.
You got it. Anybody else for the public portion, not the public, the public hearing on those U-LR matters? So, hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing, have a motion. Bart, seconded by Sal. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. So, we will now move to the public portion. So, Richard Day, you could acknowledge Richard Day again, Marnie. All right, Richard, this is your time.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys, for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Just, okay, great. So, hi, everyone. My name is Richard Day. I am the enrollment coordinator at the Department of Sanitation, or I am an enrollment coordinator at the Department of Sanitation. I work on the curbside composting program. And as you may all know, the program is actually coming back after being suspended for the last year. For those of you who aren't familiar with the program, it's the brown bin program. So, it's, it's the program that allows New York City residents to recycle their food scraps and yard waste and turn it into compost and clean energy. So, essentially, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be launching an online form in August that's going to allow you to sign up to get compost collection again. The form isn't live yet, but you can still go to nyc.gov/curbsidecomposting to actually be notified when that form goes live, so that you can apply then. Everyone who had the, the service before can get it again now. So, that's all, you know, single-family homes, two-family homes, apartment buildings, complexes. Basically, if you're interested at all in getting compost collection, just go to that website, nyc.gov/curbsidecomposting, put in your information there, and you'll get more information as we have it. But, again, the, the form goes live in August, and then service will actually be starting in October. So, this is all very exciting. The program was on pause for the last year, but we have funding again now, and so we're really excited to bring it back to all of you. And...
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. We'll look for it. Thank you, Richard.
Great, fantastic. Thanks again for having me. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me at rday@dsny.nyc.gov. Okay. Thanks for your time.
It'll be on the website.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Marnie.
Um, just one moment. Nicole Ranger.
Hello. Hi. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Nicole Ranger, and I'm a crisis counselor at Ohel, which is a social service agency, and we work in conjunction with New York Project Hope. We're funded by the state, and as crisis council, counselors, we're just here for anybody who may have been affected by COVID and who may need counseling and maybe a non-traditional form of counseling in response to COVID. We do offer short-term counseling, three to five sessions, for free, and it's anonymous. And it's just to help those who may be dealing with stress or even anxiety, you know, from COVID. So, if you or anybody you know are interested, you can contact me on my work phone. My phone number is 347-675-1189. Or you can contact me by email, which is nicole underscore ranger at ohelfamily.org. And we're just here to serve the community, to anybody who may need counseling, non-traditional counseling due to COVID.
Great. Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
If, if there's anyone else from the public, would you please use the raise hand function? We have Nancy Lulu. Nancy, you can unmute.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. I would like to extend greetings on behalf of DA Gonzalez to everyone. Just a couple of announcements. On May 25th, 2021, District Attorney Eric Gonzalez announced a community-led safety initiative with the 67 precinct clergy council, the God Squad, and neighboring clergy council to curb gun violence in Brooklyn as we enter the summer months. Working together with community members, the NYPD, and faith leaders, the DA's office and clergy council will endeavor to provide support and guidance to at-risk youth and offer assistance in several high-crime precincts to strengthen trust between communities and law enforcement as part of a holistic approach to reducing crime and breaking the recurring cycle of violence and criminal justice involvement. DA Gonzalez firmly believes in public safety. If, believes that public safety is a shared commitment and a shared responsibility. June marks Gun Violence Awareness Month, and just in Brooklyn, we've lost so many lives to senseless gun violence. At the Brooklyn DA's office, we're pursuing a multi-tiered strategy to keep our community safe from the gun violence epidemic that curbs our city. We are breaking up gun trafficking rings, and we're vigorously prosecuting shooters and working closely with communities to prevent violence and to mediate disputes. We also provide resources to, to our young people and to gun violence survivors. And with that, I would just like to remind everyone with the Action Center's phone number, if there's a matter you would like to address with our office, please call 718-250-2340. And if I could be of any assistance, feel free to reach out to me at lulun at brooklynda.org. Thank you so much, Community Board DA 11.
Appreciate it.
Edward Serna.
Hello, everyone. Chair Edward Serna here, Brooklyn Borough Director for the Mayor's Office. I'm going to give a quick vaccination update. We're now past 8.5 million vaccinations that we've administered. Last week was you vaccination week, and we administered over 34,000 doses to New Yorkers ages 12 to 17. So, we're really making inroads in reaching that young demographic and, and making sure that all New Yorkers are vaccinated and raising our level of immunity. We've also doubled down on that effort. We're going to have mobile vaccination vans going to libraries all across the cities, again, to reach families and young people. As always, you can go to nycgov/vaccinefinder to make an appointment or by calling 877-BAXFOR-NYC. Secondly, ranked choice voting is going to kick off this Saturday. It's going to be the first day of early voting. That's going to run through June 20th. This year, you know, it's going to be the first time we vote for the mayor, the comptroller, the public advocate, borough president, city council members, using this system. So, June 22nd is the primary election day. So, again, encourage everyone to, to, to go vote, and I believe the mayor today used a rank-your-pizza toppings, sort of like virtual sample ballot, to give you sort of a taste of what the ranked choice voting system is going to be like. The mayor also announced the reopening of senior centers. Senior centers are going to reopen on June 14th. However, as of like, whenever the announcement was made, outdoor activities can be done, and grabbing gold meals is something that also now, you know, our seniors can go and get at the centers, and those would be able to resume immediately. And as we phase in this reopening, this is going to be working with the Department of Health to make sure that we're establishing, you know, safe protocols to bring our seniors back safely. Lastly, on the gun violence, you know, I, the mayor's office extends its condolences to the family of Justin Wallace, who, you know, was a 10-year-old boy who got shot and was lost to this horrible gun violence that we're seeing. And so, the mayor announced an unprecedented partnership with the ATF, which is the Alcohol Tobacco and Firearms Agency, which is a federal law enforcement agency, which is going to directly embed their agents into the NYPD, and together, we're going to work to finding guns quickly and acting on the information that we receive to stop the flow of guns into the city. That partnership is going to come with resources, and this is a very clear and powerful statement that anyone that wants to traffic in illegal guns will be caught. And again, the, the mayor is committed to, to ensuring the safety of all. So, you know, that's going to be my update for this month. I think I just want to take a moment to wish also congratulations to one of your own board members, Andrew, who graduated law school, and I'm sure that was no small feat. So, thank you very much, everyone. And as always, you can reach me at cserna@cityhall.nyc.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one?
I'll call you back.
Nobody else?
Is there anyone else from the public?
Okay.
Marnie, um, I'm sorry, I had raised my hand. I just wanted to say something about SIR, if that's okay? Uh, yeah, you could either have done it here. If you, if you have your SIR hat on, then by all means, speak now.
She could do that, though. She's a board member, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you could do that under new business.
How's that?
We'll, we'll call you at the board meeting, new business.
All right.
Let's get rid of the public.
Fine. Okay, we have David Nussbaum. David?
Hi, Bill. Hi, Marnie. Hi, everybody. Hope everyone's doing well. Nothing really to announce in the neighboring Community Board, you know, Community Board 10. They have this deadline coming up for local 152, the gas inspections, but that doesn't apply yet to Community Board 11. Um, the only other thing I just wanted to announce, you know, now, of course, it's the cooling season, and, you know, people put air conditioners in their windows. The, the guidance we give is to follow whatever the manufacturer's recommendations are, but, but certain common sense things, you don't want to prop it up with like bricks or wood or, or things like that, which, you know, could fall out in addition to the air conditioner falling out. So, um, we just want, you know, you do it safely and do it according to the manufacturer's guidelines. Frank wasn't able to attend tonight, so I'll put his email in the chat, and, you know, if anyone has a DOB issue, feel free to reach out to us.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Anybody else?
One moment. Nope.
Okay, hearing none, I'd like to close the public portion of the meeting. Can I have, uh, okay, Ross, seconded by Manuel Lau. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. So, I'd like to adopt the minutes of May 13th of the treaty board. I have a motion to accept. Okay, Robert, seconded by, seconded by Linda. All, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so we're, we're all set with that. I'd like to call on Ross. We'd like to dispose of the public hearing that we had and the committee meeting that we had. So, Ross, you're on the air.
Okay, thank you. And let me put my notes back up. The, so our planning and zoning committee met, I believe, at the date, hey, it was, was June 3rd. This week has been extraordinarily long, so I could have the dates wrong. But there are, there are three matters that are a part of the, part of this public hearing and a part of our meeting. The first one was the, and would you like me to read the numbers into the minutes?
While you put the numbers in, you can just tell us.
Okay. Okay, the first one was the proposed elevate transit. It's a text and for zoning for accessibility in order to make our, our transit easements for ADA access on sites. A lot of it means, you know, elevators for our train stations. And in exchange for, for that, some, it might also mean in some places in the city, actually entrances in buildings and different configurations in front of buildings in exchange for some zoning relief in order for that to happen. We discussed it, and we recommend that the board approve the application with the following conditions: that the community board receive notification and input on the applications that the developers submit to the MTA, that there's some provision for maintenance, maintenance of the sidewalks and snow removal and things that they haven't thought of, and also to address the issue of indemnification for all sorts of things that could happen. And Andrew will remember the, his law school tort training, which brings that into consideration. So, that, that is, that it was the consensus and the vote of the committee to recommend that the community board approve the application with those conditions.
You want to, we'll take that. So, can I have a motion to accept the, the first U-LR on this? Yes, Laurie, seconded by Ruben. Any discussion? All in favor? Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, so the first one carries.
Okay, and our second was the proposed hotel text amendment. This amendment is to provide an opportunity for a community to review applications on the impact of new hotels in the community. However, the fault or shortcoming which the Planning and Zoning Committee found unanimously was that, that this text amendment excludes transient hotels that are operated, what they call exclusively for the public purpose of temporary housing assistance by the city estate or any other NGO or any other contract to, to open up hotels basically for these uses without any community input. And we, we've seen that in our community, there, there are certain, there are places, and there's one in particular where people want to open up a, without much community input, a transient housing with all sorts of uses near schools and near, near parks. And the committee felt strongly that this was so egregious that we recommend to the board to reject this text amendment. Does that put that to you?
So, when you're saying reject it, well, you want the whole, the whole thing. Now, Marnie, just sort of give me an update. I just want to sort of get this right, so we don't, like, hey, listen, we're all going to be for this, because we don't want them just sneaking transient hotels in there, and we know why we're doing that. But, Marnie, can you give me just like a little background on what, if we take this, right? Does it have like a cascading effect in any way?
So, um, hotels are permitted today as of right without a special permit or public hearing to be built in C1 districts except for C1s, C1 dash 2, C1 dash 3, or C1 dash 4, C4 districts, C5, C6, C8, and the MX doesn't, uh, isn't us. We don't have any, and M1 paired with the residential district. So, that's basically all commercial corridors in that district.
So, what I'm saying here is, can any, if we go say no to this, does it have effect on anything else, this part of, of the U-LR?
Yeah, what, what we're saying is we don't want input and have a, a special permit for any of the, those hotels that may be built in those areas because of the exemption.
So, what, so, and I'm really sorry to the committee. I know you guys did a lot of hard work on this. I just want to fully understand it, because every time we reject something, I like to get more in the weeds on it.
Right. Well, I think, Bill, the reason, the thought behind it, and the people that express it perhaps can express it better was the feeling that we really have, that it's, it's going to pass, and there is in actuality not going to be any input anyway. And it's so egregious that a stand had to be taken against the whole text amendment because of the exclusion of these hotels.
If they were a part of this, let me ask this, okay, because we've done this, maybe I'm here too long, but we've done this before, is, are there carve-outs in here? Instead of just throwing the whole, you know, baby away with the bathwater, can we carve out the part we don't like?
I would leave that, the members of the committee expressed to me, and I can override them, that, that there were not, but bringing that to the board now, just speaking of, of course, for discussion, of course, there are carve-outs. You could, you could have input, and the whole as-of-right building, you know, is anathema to what we're doing. So, we need to insist on the exclusion is what we need to do.
Right.
I, I think what Bill's concern was when he read it and why he's following up is that when we go on record, right, we're going on record as opposing the whole text amendment and the ability for us to hear a special permit on 86th Street, New Yee-Tup Avenue, 18th Avenue, because we're opposed to that portion.
So, can we carve out? That, that was my, yeah, Marnie, thank you for, for saying it in a better way. So, I didn't want to just kill everywhere else where we could have input, because then I don't want it to backfire on the board where it says, yeah, they voted against it. They don't, they don't want any of the input. They didn't like any of it. And it hurts us on the other corridors. I know why I want to do this. I'm way on board, trust me. Don't even think twice. This is any way, shape, or form saying that I want to give them any foot in the door to not have us have input when they want to put things like a homeless shelter on, on that day 23rd. Marnie, maybe you can, and maybe anybody else's discussion. That was just my thought when I read it. So, I mean, you know, anybody on the committee or whatever?
Yeah.
Just to sort of enlighten it a little more.
Chairman, if I, if I could real quick, sorry, I, I don't, as a co-host on, on the webinar, I don't have the ability to raise my hand right now. I can't find that ability, so I apologize. But the thought of the committee initially was that, like yours, Chairman, that as much as we agree that it, there are certain carve-outs that we appreciate as a community, they, they put those in, and then they slipped in the poison pill.
Correct.
Poison pill was that, you know, you're going to take this because you, you know you want some input on the special permits, like you said. But at the same time, anytime the city wants to come in and put something in under the, you know, under the table, you know, trick of the sleeve, they can do it through this little loophole.
Exactly.
So, instead of giving them that little loophole, you know, we, what we could have done is say, as a committee, we agree with X, Y, and Z, but we disagree with that little loophole. And they'd say, thank you very much for passing it anyway. And so, our thought is, let's just come out stronger against this and say, if you're going to try to trick us or put a poison pill into this, you're going to get us on the record saying that we appreciate 99% of it, but we have a problem with this 1%. We'd rather just say, no, go back to the drawing board and do it anyway, because what's the, what's the likelihood that this gets redone? This is going to pass. This is going to pass. This is going to pass, and this is going to be fine. They, they're not concerned with community board support. They put this in front of us because they had to. They put this in front of us because they want us to blanket approve it. They want us to say, yes, we like X, Y, and Z, but we don't like that last part. And for that reason, we thought it would be nice that we come out as a community, community board and say, as much as we want, 99% of these things, you're not going to get us with that one thing you, you want. That one thing that you want to slip that, that, that shelter in without our input. And that's how they're, they're going to do it. And I know it's a separate issue.
Andrew, I'm on your page.
I know, I know. It's just...
What my concern is, this is my concern. So, we try to send a message. It's going to pass anywhere, like you said. Listen to me. This is way above our pay grade, but it, it's, it's going to pass. Do we want to, as a community board, that was my fear, that we want as a community board to say, we didn't like anything in there, and anything in that we didn't want to be part of, even though there's only really that one big bugaboo in there that we totally can't live with? So, I, that was my fear. I don't want them coming back and using it against us. But if the board feels that way, listen, I'm just trying to be the devil's advocate here. You know, certainly, I'm open to it all. I just don't want the backlash of, they just summarily said no to everything, even things that would have been good for the community. Instead of carving it out, go ahead, Laurie, jump in, because you...
We can say, because we had two schools of thought on this, that we could say, we approve it, but we have an objection to this piece of it. But once you say you approve it and you have an objection, they don't read after the but part.
Gotcha.
You know, they don't care then. But if we say, we don't approve this because specifically of X, Y, and Z, for that reason alone, that that is such a bitter pill to swallow that we cannot approve the whole thing because of that one item, we feel that strongly about it as a community.
We were Laurie. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Robert's got the floor.
I mean, we all know why they're doing this, so they can just put the homeless shelters wherever they want without the community board approval. I mean, you know what? I, I agree with everyone else. We need to stand up and say, you know, no, you're not going to do this. You know what? Is the one big, small piece that they're sticking in, the poison pill, bigger than everything else? To, you know, I'd rather defend the community against an unwanted homeless shelter than, and then, you know, it's saying, getting stuck with backlash for all the, all the corridors. You know, it's, it's just, you know, the city's going to do it anyway, but at least if we're going to stand up for something, we'll stand for something.
Okay. Again, I was just, I read it. I read it blind. That wasn't part of the meeting. I saw the minutes because Marnie showed the minutes, and it just stood out to me. I just wanted to make sure we're going in with our eyes open. When we vote, we're going in with our eyes open. I know the committee does a lot of hard work here. So, really, I want to say to the committee, I'm not diminishing it. I just wanted to bring it up as a, you know, let's make sure we're going in eyes wide open. So, the committee, you know, I'll move into a vote. The committee has said that they'd like to reject this in its totality. Can I have a, a motion?
Bill, could I say something? Is this just coming?
Wait, Bart. We're going to put it on, and then you can still have discussion. So, Robert and Ruben seconded. Now, you can talk, Bart.
Is this just coming before our community board, or is it called?
No.
Any other community board?
459.
At all 59? Of all 59, stick together, then it should make a good show for it to be disapproved. And you come before the committee boards.
But, but again, it is what it is. Our board has said this, our committee has said this. So, let's see what the vote is. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Let me do it in reverse. Is there anybody opposed? Is there anybody like to abstain? So, it's carried unanimously. Thanks for all your hard work, Ross, and the entire committee. And usually, you don't see that interruption from the, usually, we get right through it, but I thought it was an important matter, because it just stuck out of my head when I read it. Okay, so the last one.
Last one, and thank you, everyone, and thank you, Andrew, for expressing that viewpoint, clearing that up, too. The last one, the Health and Fitness CY Text Amendment. Short background is that, you know, BSA special permits are required as, under the term physical culture establishments or health establishments for gyms, spas, licensed, I'm sorry, licensed massage therapy places and other health and fitness facilities for several reasons, because you don't, you don't want them to actually be shields for other kind of activity, for vices, for unlicensed massage parlors, et cetera. Um, the text amendment seeks to remove that, that burden. The special requirement. After discussion and going over the history and, and what kind of tools that we're left with if this is taken away. The zoning and planning committee agreed that the onerous requirements on legitimate businesses like gyms should be removed. However, you know, with the history of vice and other activity happening, we don't, to, to put it in colorful terms, we don't, I don't want 80, we don't want 86th Street turning into a red light district. We don't, we, we've seen the struggle that there's been to remove illegitimate, unlicensed massage or other activity parlors and unsavory places within, within our community. So we would recommend that this text amendment go through to remove the burden, but that the special, so that the special permit requirement is removed for gyms. However, there should be no change for the special permit requirement for licensed massage therapies and spas until there's some kind of other regulatory framework in place in which the community has some kind of way to prevent bad actors from setting up shops where there are vice, where there is vice. I think that's the simplest way to, to put it, and I hope that was clear.
So, Ross made the motion, because it was a pretty long motion. Does anybody want to second Ross's motion? Okay, so Andrew's gonna second it. Is there any discussion?
So, hearing none. I, I could, are we now saying that we want to piecemeal uh, the good part out of, out of this motion versus the other one where we stood opposed to the hotel issue? But now we're gonna piecemeal it, you know what? We, if we don't want these massage parlors any which way, you know, I, I understand that's a burden on the gyms. But they're working right now under that current scenario. I think in order to keep those from 86th Street and all those other corridors from it, I know, I think we should just automatically reject it, you know what, same way we're doing with the hotel, with the homeless shelter and everything else, you know, but if we start splitting hairs, you know, what's good for the community? Where, where, where do we stop and end with this, with the city trying to do what it wants anyway?
I will say, so, Robert, what you need to do there, because there was a motion on the floor to accept it. When we vote, when people feel the way you do, they need to vote against. But when I call the question, when you're voting for, you're voting for what the committee has recommended. Okay, so, any other discussion?
Yeah, but.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Just to, just to back Ross up on this one, as the chair of the zoning committee, when we were looking at it, the reason that the other one was, was the homeless shelters one is because uh, it's just a completely different industry than, than this piece right now, which is gyms. Um, along with massage parlors. And, and the fact is, is that we've been seeing a lot of gyms, like Robert said, operating under these standards right now. But unfortunately, they're becoming the big corporate ones that have huge change and chain, chains and franchises. And we don't really see mom and pop gyms anymore start up like we used to before I was born. Um, and that's partially because we have this huge, long four to six month process on it. And we thought, you know, look, we understand that agencies need the power to go after certain massage parlors that aren't following the law. But at the same time, why do they need this to go after gyms? That we've never had a problem with in this community district, that we want to see opening up. And that we actually want to see decorporatized and, and more in the, the hands of families and, and small business members that can actually provide that gym service and be your local gym on the corner. Um, and so I just, I just wanted to, to explain why I differed with Robert's take on that one and why the committee came out a little separately on it. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, I'm gonna call the question, so all in favor? Let's go, let's do it in reverse, who's opposed? All right, so Robert's opposed, anybody else and?
Angelo.
Anybody else? Okay, so Carrie with two opposed, anybody want to abstain? Okay, so, two opposed, the motion does carry. And I thank the committee for their hard work, because these always are not easy ones to go through, as we saw. Probably the most, most intense discussion we've had on these type of issues in a long time. So I thank you very much for picking up the, picking up the pace, okay. So, um, we dispose of the public hearings, we'll close, we'll close that. Last month, we elected everybody, so Marty, just go through who we elected last month. Because I was one of them, so. Uh, I preempted myself, so I'll have to really do the official vote tonight. So, Marty, if you give us the.
The slate is Chairman William Guarinella, First Vice Chair Lori Windsor, Second Vice Chair Sonia Valentin, Treasurer Eileen LaRuffa, Secretary Mamai Lau.
Is there anybody else, any other? Hearing none, can we move the slate? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, okay. So, we do have some new board members here tonight, and before I go, I'd like to acknowledge them. So I might pronounce some names wrong, the way people get my name wrong, so what I do, when we're in person, just correct me, okay? But I'm gonna try my best, but newly appointed to the board was Ruvain Borshot. We have Michael Garth Hafner, Garth Hafner, Lorraine Mazzola, Karen Sardell, Ahmed Nasser, Jay Brown, Lilbeth Chang, Leon Freud, and Alan Esses. Welcome to the community board. We look to have your presence and input, and we're happy to have you with us, and thank you. So when I move into the next part of the agenda, we did receive some communication within the last two weeks. Uh, the Institute for Community Living, looking, not-for-profit, looking to put that shelter up at 2147 Bath Avenue. They advise us that they're seeking our support to amend the occupancy from a single men's shelter to a family shelter. Now, we have not received any communication from DHS, which is the department that's gonna let this contract. And it's my understanding that they're still in process of looking for alternative sites. From the time that the community board received the DHS notification, we were advised of the following. The board has no input, no formal role, role in the selection process. There would be no special permit application, nor subject, nor would they be subject to uniform land review procedures. Now, I don't believe, and I'm asking the board to start on to this, that we should be a tool to negotiate between a not-for-profit provider and DHS. Because from my perspective, this is also just a backdoor way of getting the 2147 site active again. You know, if we turn around and say, yeah, you know, like whatever, we don't want the men's shelter. Well, family thing, we'll write the city and say, family thing. And then, all of a sudden, okay, well, you approved everything, we're in. There's no opposition, so. Also, with many mayoral candidates supporting affordable housing, using existing hotels to address homelessness, the board should consider calling for a moratorium on, on citing any property. Uh, or approval of any contracts for the purpose of a homeless shelter in Board 11. And we want a way for that next administration to come in, if they want to continue with the same policies, great. Uh, you know, they'll have to fight them, we're gonna, we're ready to give them. But if, you know, if we can do that, I, I think, you know, it's only about four or five months, you know, six months, actually, it's June. Uh, and the new administration, you know, maybe they would be more listening to not just pushing things at communities and wanting our input, so. I'm gonna say to us, I'm gonna be looking for the board's support from Marty to write a letter on the board's behalf to say the following, we're not going to, we're not gonna opine on any of the way you want to do this, because we don't get involved in, you know, in, in, inter, you know, I'm sorry, not-for-profit and city agencies negotiations. And that we'd like them to have a moratorium. There's a new administration coming in and we'd like them to, to, to leave it on hold till we can talk to the new people in place. So is anybody?
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, we do, Ross. Okay, Laurie's in, Ross is in, are there any other discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, Marty, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Marty, if we get that letter out, you know, I hope that it works. During the summer recess, board members will receive requests for information from the office about committee assignments. We ask you to complete and return that as soon as you get it. And so that we can make committee assignments along with the interest in areas of expertise of each individual here. Uh, I like to commend our Captain Chen and his men for apprehending the individual in connection with the vandalism at Saint Age Church and the arson at the Borough Park Synagogue, so, real good work by the man and you, and you deserve a lot of applause by this, thank you so much.
Thank you, it's actually hate crime task force that did it, but I'll take the credit for them, thank you.
Well, you should take the credit for it, that's it.
Uh, you know, our men and women that did, you know, do, do, you know, um, great job out there, right after, as soon as that happened, um, we sent out full forces, you know, to all the house of worship, not just the churches, obviously. Uh, so we've seen, you know, what happened lately with, you know, all the attack on, you know, you know, for people with different religions, you know, but we are, you know, the NYPD, you know, totally against that, you know, so we have heightened up our patrol in, in, in all the house of worship and in all the areas, you know. It's just, you know, hate crimes against, you know, religion and hate crime against any races, you know, same thing, it's all hate crime, you know. Uh, this, this is zero tolerance, and then, as you can see, you know, 62 precinct, you know, and, you know, NYPD, we have, you know, beef up, you know, our patrol on all this area. And then, you know, we tried to, you know, combat it as much as we could.
Is there anything else you want to add? You have the floor, so you might as well.
Okay, yeah, sure, you know, I, I want to bring up, it's probably some people, some concern about last week. And there are, you know, a couple incidents happened, you know, a, a couple shots fired, you know, property damage, and there's also, you know, a non-fatal shooting in a 62 precinct. Uh, with all, you know, you know, we just pretty, pretty much, you know, uh, it seems like, you know, we are just, you know, doing what the rest of the city is doing, but I could, rest of sure, 62 is still pretty, we're still trying to keep 62 as safe as, you know, we, we could be. Uh, all these incidents being investigated right now, and then, you know, and then, uh, as we, you know, they're all like, what do you call, you know, they, they all isolated incident, I could assure you, it's no gang war, anything like that going on. And then, you know, uh, and summer's coming, you know, that's another issue, uh, summer's coming up. Um, we're gonna be out in the parks, we're gonna see, uh, so we're gonna have, you know, patrol in the parks. Um, the officer's gonna be in the parks and then, and the bypass area. You know, increased patrol over there, and also, you know, um, I also want to remind everyone, I know 4th July is coming. I know it's very tempting to, you know, to light up some fireworks, it's, you know, still illegal in New York City, so just remind everyone about the fireworks. And that's that, you know. Oh, uh, one last thing, uh, we, National Night Out's bad. It's, I think it's on August 3rd, you know, coming up, so, National Night Out.
Great, we'll look forward to that, Cap, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so Marty, District Manager's report.
Do you want to do Laurie first, and then I'll close out?
If you do that, yes, Laurie. Transportation Committee.
Okay, this is a petition for revocable consent, 1852 Bath Avenue, which is the corner of Bay 20th, used to be the funeral home. They're asking for, to put in a ramp for access for people with disabilities. And it would be on the Bay 20th side, not on Bath Avenue, on Bay 20th. A concrete ramp with aluminum railings. So basically, we just need to give an approval for this, that we're in agreement, recommendation for it.
Andrew made the motion, seconded by Ross. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions, okay.
An opposed disability.
Thank you very much, Laurie. Thank you. All right, Marty, you're on here.
I'm done, okay. Um, I just want to say it's exciting for those people who are interested in, in the organics program. I know, because it was voluntary, we didn't have as much participation as we could have in the district, but those that are interested can, can have the opportunity to sign up and, and participate. I just want to talk about the routes, when this originally rolled out, this community was left with a tremendous amount of, of, of regular garbage left on the streets because the garbage trucks were diverted to the organics program, and I'm just hoping that when they do it, no trucks are diverted and all our garbage is picked up. Um, and I'm just putting that out there as a general statement. And Bill, I, I, I just want to ask you a question, I didn't follow up. Was your section collected this afternoon?
Yes, I meant, I meant to call you, it came late about 4 o'clock.
I just want to.
Before, yeah.
Yeah, and I asked that question because in past years, we've had sections where, where they moved around collections for recycling or, or regular garbage. And during the summer months, we had blocks with garbage left out until 4 to 12. Now, you know, you know, we have a community with a lot of people and the garbage sinks and it attracts rodents. If they're going to, to plan to do that, they should send a communication out to the residents.
Correct.
Please don't put out your garbage till 4:00 PM, instead of having it the night before, all day through, so.
And it always seems, I told, I told Marty, there's no such thing as preferential service for the chairman.
No.
We have gotten, every time the summer comes, the outside gets picked up at 8 o'clock in the morning, and we get picked up on the 4 to 12, with no, with no notice. So there's all of this smelling garbage hanging in the street. And, you know, I told him every once in a while, you should change the lineup, or let us know, listen, don't put it out till 4, I won't put it out till 4. So, there's no, I just want anybody to know, you know, they treat everybody equally horribly, so.
Good, I'm, I'm glad there's no concern. Um, I attended a pre-construction meeting regarding the reconstruction of 270 feet of the existing eight-by-eight outfall storm sewer on 25th Avenue between Hunter Avenue and Gravesend Bay. The notice to proceed is issued on June 2nd with a scheduled completion date of November 27th, 2022. Uh, the contractor will be working from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. But days when they're working in the water, it will be according to the tide. So there's approximately, um, I believe it's, it's ballpark, you know, 150 feet on land and the rest 140 something feet in the water. I brought up some environmental concerns that were brought up in the past with other projects down on Gravesend Bay, and I'm told that DEC permits and Army Corps permits were obtained. And we have requested a copy of the same for our records. And the traffic impacts, there should be none because it's on private property all the way in the back um, behind the marine transfer station in that vicinity. So that'll be going and hopefully it'll help with some of our discharges in the vicinity. Um, as you may remember, the board made some comments and asked that there be some sort of backflow preventer so that when rainwater went out, but we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have ocean water coming back in. Um, and that's been an issue of concern at other outfalls along 17th Avenue. Um, the mayor recently signed an executive order that lifts most of the restrictions on state boat permits, street activity permit office permitting. All events must adhere to New York State guidelines, however, there are no longer any prohibitions on any of the following event types. Street fairs and single block festivals, block parties, multi-block or multi-plasma events, events on open streets, and events with stage, screen, and amplified sound. However, applicants must still submit a safety plan affirmation document to state boat with every event application. And the larger events must comply with New York State guidance and for the multi-block events, I know the 86th Street Festival, that which would have taken place this Sunday, will not be moving forward because of all the regulations and guidelines in place. And I'm not sure about the. and I'm not sure about the 18th Avenue feast, but I will be submitting the recommendations that the board adopted last June to reduce the days to seven days and we'll be entering that tomorrow. Um, and and the board internally, just administratively, in the past for block parties, we have requested a petition from, um, the neighbors on the block showing general consensus for the closure and the event. But due to current, uh, the current situation, I don't think it's appropriate to ask people to go to door-to-door, um, regardless of their, you know, comfort level. So we are just going to ask that the organizer print up a flyer with the date and time and submit it to neighbors and submit that and affirm that they share that with the block before we review the application. And I think that should should be fine. I don't think there'll be any issues with outdoor events, um. So that's the role will be taken in our recommendations. And and finally, the Planning and Zoning Committee, you know, our new members that are here for the first time, we don't meet during, um, July and August. However, we received a request from an attorney who's representing a land use application for 2080 McDonald's Avenue. And they have requested to meet with the committee and we'll be doing that. Ross was gracious enough to to give his time and I'm sure the committee will make time to participate for July 14th at 6:30 PM. Notices will go out before and of course, we will, um, live stream it to our Facebook page and our YouTube channel. And that's it. I just want to congratulate the officers and the new members. I look forward to working with everyone. You're muted.
Yeah, I I got like morning now, I'm getting.
Okay.
Um, is there any old business, new business?
Hello, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Is it old business or new?
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, is it old business or new? Is it something we talked about before, something new?
I ask you a question.
Okay.
About the homeless shelter.
Go ahead.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you hear me, right? Okay, I I I read the letter sent by, uh, David Woodcott, uh, the president and CEO of Institute for Community Living. I read the letter, they're gonna change the program. They're gonna, they're gonna change the project from homeless shelter to family shelter.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I, because our commu- no, no, our community don't know anything about it. It's possible to have a meeting in the future. Let our community member understand what's going on. I talked to a lot of them. They don't know what's going on, they don't know anything about it.
Dr. Law.
Yes.
We talked about this, that was a matter that we received.
Yeah, I know.
We're not gonna get involved in the middle of it.
No, it is a possible have a meeting. I mean, at least let them understand. They don't know anything about it.
Who, who knows?
The the community members.
What?
I know, I know you had the meeting, you're talking about the hotel, the shelter, everything, I know that, you understand.
Uh, the the not-for-profit wrote to the community board. The agency, ICL, the letter you have, they wrote to us as the community board.
Yeah.
Okay, we're not gonna get involved in it because they're looking for support so they can put it in. We don't want anything at this point. We don't want to approve anything.
No, I know, I know we don't want to get involved, but can we have a meeting, let them understand what's going on? It's a possible have a meeting. That's what I asked you.
Who has to meet? I don't, I'm, 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 Marty, help me here.
Yeah, and Marty, can we set out a meeting, let them understand what's going on?
Dr. Law with who?
Yeah.
Who's gonna meet?
With the committee members.
Who, what, who's the committee?
Committee members, yeah, lives around the 2147.
Community members.
Yes, yes.
Yes, all we know is what we read in that letter and and the feeling of the board was was that we were originally opposed
Okay.
to the shelter in that location based upon the zoning without a special permit.
Yep, I got it.
And now for whatever reason, which was said in that letter, without any notification from DHS.
Okay.
The nonprofit provider is looking for the board's support for a family shelter. What we're saying is, we are going to have a new mayor take office.
Yeah, about six months, yes.
And they may decide, we do not want to put new homeless shelters, we would rather use existing built hotels for permanent shelters.
Okay.
Or we would like to to make more affordable housing.
Okay.
Permanent housing.
So, so Dr. Law, let let me say this, there's no need for us to have a community meeting, just wait, put your listening ears on. We need to not have a community meeting because there's nothing to add to this, okay? We are trying to say, we're writing a letter for more, you can say, you're the, you are the community board member. You go to the meeting and you say, we're going for a moratorium and we're not getting involved in in giving any support. That's all we have to offer, two things. So there's no need to have a meeting and we're not going to have a meeting.
And we're not going to negotiate a change of use
Right.
in that location, I mean.
No, no, what I tried to say is let them know what's going on, that's all.
You can tell them, you're the board member, you tell them.
Sometimes I don't have that kind of authority, that's why, you know.
I'm giving you the authority to express what we just talked about at the board. I'm giving you the authority, as I.
And and I think the elected officials spoke very well.
The elected officials, Bill Colton knows what's going on.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay.
All right, so Kenny, you waited patiently.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Oh, good evening, everybody. I just want to give a quick note and let you know that even during the pandemic, CERT has Community Emergency Response Team has been active in the sideline, but they've been, they've been doing things. And we're slowly coming back, we're slowly going to be handing out pamphlets on emergency preparedness. We're going to be setting up tables for, uh, handing out these leaflets. And if anybody is interested in joining the CERT team, they can go to cert@oem.nyc.gov. Um, we are always looking for members, we serve community boards 10 and 11, very active with the six-two and six-eight. And the community board knows us and we're here if you ever need us for any, any type of help. That's it.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Okay, I actually have, didn't get a chance, I have all, all business, actually.
All right, so, uh, uh, we'll let you do all business.
Okay, uh, Shore Parkway, where they put in that traffic light again. Uh, it's going to be a danger with, with the way they have it set up, when crunch comes out and can't get into the, um, into the the lane to go straight. It's causing A, a backup, and somebody's gonna get killed when those people that come out of crunch that make that right turn. They can only go into the turning lane in order to get out, uh, and they're.
I'm sorry, did you mean 26th Avenue on on Shore?
Yeah, we're talking the one over here by BJ's, we're talking about BJ's where they put that light with that, with that turn signal. What it is, is you have that, they have that, uh, turn signal where it says, uh, right to go into into BJ's. But when crunch comes out, they doesn't, there's absolutely nowhere for them to go into that lane to go straight. They're forced into that turning lane, creating a backup there where someone's gonna get hurt. Never mind, the fact here is, is that they're blocking A, the bike lanes, uh, by doing that. So somebody's gotta look at that as a general thing, as this, uh, as a way to fix that before somebody gets killed. Because I've watched it, I will, I will, I watched it, I watched it. I've watched it several times myself and I'm just shaking my head here, is how DOT can turn around and do that? And not figure out that, you know what? If not, that business is gonna go out of business.
You haven't lived here long enough on a community board to know that some of these things never make sense? Been here long enough, you know that. That's why there's a community board. All right, we we definitely will get to the, uh, Brooklyn, uh, Commissioner.
Um.
And a good checkup. Any other new business?
Actually, yeah, now I got new business. I can, I can, actually, one more old business, though. Last, last month, you talked about Verizon and those trucks, the commercial trucks that will be parked out here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I noticed a lot of overnight, a lot of commercial vehicles are parking, literally, not the auto-alter, but the regular commercial vehicles are taking up residential spots, forcing people unfortunately to park by hydrates, which is also ano- another safety issue, but you know what? If there's no enforcement of, uh, commercial vehicles overnight in the community, opening up spots for regular people, you know what? I didn't know, but I personally have spent nights in my car because I can't find a spot because there's commercial vehicles. And I watch them all the time. Is there some way we can have, you know what, maybe look around, you know what, have?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the captain, on occasions, we've been very successful.
Well, just, you know, whenever, uh, yes, I'm sorry, interrupt. So whenever you see commercial vehicle parking overnight and, uh, you could always call 211, I think they have an, uh, option now. You could actually take the picture and, you know, you know, uh, so we had the picture, uh, you know, when the officer respond, they have the picture, they know exactly which car they looking for. So we'll go over there, we'll take it, the, you know, the, the vehicle. But, uh, as you said, you know, regarding to Verizon truck, uh, a lot of the times, they just don't care because they don't, they don't have to pay for it. It's, Verizon's paying for it, so, uh, that's why, you know, after a while, we kind of stop, you know, and, you know, go responding to it because it's free, doesn't, you know.
Well, it gives the city money, we should still, still bang away with them.
Oh, sure, yeah, I mean, you know, uh, the officers would would love to respond because, you know, it's, uh, I know it, we, we, there's no numbers for for whatever, but it it looks good on their activity reports, so. I I mean, you know, anytime you have, you know, you see something about this, uh, just 4211, 2111 and, uh, you know, um, with the pictures taken that are attached to it.
You know, ticket.
Okay, now, 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 new business.
Okay.
On Shore Parkway, uh, the, between the highway and Shore Parkway, we now have more than one gap in open fence there. Um, it looks like DOT originally put a concrete barricade where where they removed fence, now they literally took that away. But there's now, there's now an opening between the highway and Shore Parkway. True, there was also a, an accident two, two weeks ago where some cars slid across and actually pushed out another part of the fence near Shore Parkway, where the fence is literally still parting in the roadway. You know what? Somebody, you know, DOT has got to say, you know what, we got to replace this fence before somebody gets hurt. Uh, the one that's currently in the street and also close up the gap on Shore Parkway.
Yeah, bar, bar.
Bars.
They closed up that gap today, Robert.
Yes, we had a conversation.
BJ's and the, the cement barricades are still there, they left them there because of that. But the other part where the car was banged across the street, that's gonna probably be fixed.
Okay, so there's your update. All right, any other new business? Thank you, Robert. Okay, so hearing none, I wish everybody a very happy, healthy, peaceful and recreational summer. More importantly, though, let's hope we keep going in the direction we're going, more people get vaccinated. And this way, in September, we can meet in person, so see you in September at the.
Good summer, everybody, good summer.
All right, God bless.
God bless.
Bye-bye.
Have a good summer.
Bye-bye, have a good summer. Happy Father's Day.
Happy Father's Day.